A 10th, 2022 meeting of the Oxford Planning Board to order. First on the agenda, plans not requiring subdivision approval. We do have one at the northerly portion of vacant land on Lester Street. An A and R application, applicant and owner Daniel Proudy of Expedition Realty Trust. I'll turn that over to our subcommittee chairman, Jeffrey Staff.
Thank you. The applicant is Dan Proudy, Expedition Realty Trust. The mailing address is Peel Box 2917, Worcester, Massachusetts. Property information is Assessor's Map 03, parcel A 03. Zoning is Business General. Property address, description is the northerly portion of the vacant lot. Proposed number of lots is one. So he has, like I said, he has plenty of frontage to access his property. I don't see any issues with this stuff at all.
Lot 100.
Lot 100, yeah. Anyone else, any questions? No? Okay.
I vote that we accept this as a plan not requiring subdivision approval.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Okay. Close enough to 7:05. We have a scheduled public hearing on Zero Milbury Road and Zero Wellington Road, frontage on Depot Road, with a street address of 75 Depot Road assigned by the assessor for applications for a special permit and site plan and approval. Applicant Oxford Land Ventures. We received a letter from Oxford Land Ventures dated January 6, 2022, to the Planning Board for the proposed logistics center at Zero Depot Road, Oxford, Mass. The Planning Board site plan review application and special permit application is addressed to Tony Souza. Says, Dear Mr. Souza, I am writing to notify you that Oxford Land Ventures LLC hereby wishes to withdraw without prejudice the site plan review application and the special permit application currently pending before the Planning Board in connection with the above referenced project. A hearing is presently scheduled for Monday, January 10, 2022, and we request that the Planning Board vote at that time to allow us to withdraw these applications without prejudice. We will work to continue with the Oxford Conservation Commission to address their concerns regarding impacts to wetlands and submit a new site plan review application and special permit application at a later date. Thank you, Oxford Land Ventures LLC, Elias Petouchisius.
Thanks, Ty.
Okay. So I would request that the Board make a motion to accept this withdrawal without prejudice from Oxford Land Ventures.
All right, I'll move that.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All those voting in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions carried by members here tonight? So what that does is it basically shuts off the public hearing. We're not even going to open it. And what that's going to do is they're taking this whole action off our table, and when they're ready to come back, the same thing is going to happen that got you people here tonight. You're going to get letters and everything else from the clerk about his list, everything else, and you'll be well notified of the next meeting, whenever it'll be. Whenever it'll be.
In the mail?
Oh, yeah. You'll get notified exactly the way you were.
Thank you.
Okay, it's like they're starting all over again.
Right, so right now, this is off the table, like they have to resubmit the whole file.
Okay, so they've already paid to have a third-party reviewer review all the plans, and we have all the records of what was previously done, so when it restarts, everything will be picked up at that time again. All right? So...
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Okay. Yeah, yeah. If you're here for the public hearing on the logistics site, it just got withdrew without prejudice. Okay, just letting you know. I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Going down on the agenda? Going down on the agenda, we have some minutes to address. Let's see. All right. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes, the Planning Board minutes of November 22, 2021.
I'll make that a motion.
Seconded by Roger. Further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried unanimously. Okay, entertain a motion to accept the minutes of December 13, 2021.
I'll make that a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Roger. Further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously. Jeff, you're part of the meeting.
Yeah, I know.
You have a couple of rights of first refusal.
Yeah.
24 Conlon Road, there's a right of first refusal.
This is a nice piece of property, Tony.
It should look familiar.
Yeah.
It was an A and R plan not too long ago. Let me scroll down.
Yeah.
Let's see.
Due to the lack of funds, I request the town to waive its right of first refusal for this property.
Okay, is there a second?
We don't have any mind about it.
Right.
Seconded by Roger.
Further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Carried unanimously. And we have another one, a right of first refusal of 50 Main Street.
And I'll pull it up. So it's three parcels, all in the industrial district.
Yeah, I was just going to say, is it right on Main, is it right on Route 12?
It is. And I'll show you.
Too bad.
It's just past the, when you're traveling down Main Street, just past the tracks.
Oh, you have to cut.
On the left side, you'll see the drive leading up to here. This is Old Brook at the top end as well. It is within the industrial district, so it's three parcels. There's a sliver of it within the R2 also. So it is between the tracks and 395.
Yeah, again, due to the lack of funds to purchase such said property, I request the town to waive its right of first refusal for this parcel on 50 Main Street.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Roger. Further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Carried unanimously. Okay, Mary, I did sign off those decisions. We have an open meeting law complaint filed by Mr. Robert King, received December 23, Everyone in their packet today got the letter, the complaint. Tony, you want to let us know what happened?
Sure.
Let the Board know what happened.
Sure, I'll provide an overview. And first, with the instructions of the open meeting law complaint as was submitted. So where's that? The chair disseminated the complaint to the members of the body, and we are meeting to review the body, is meeting to review the complaint within 14 business days. And after review, but within 14 business days, the public body must respond to the complaint in writing and must send the complainant a response and a description of any action the public body has taken to address the allegations in the complaint. At the same time, the body must send the attorney general a copy of the complaint and a copy of the response. And the public body, this planning board, may delegate this responsibility to an individual member of the board, council, or a staff member, but only after, only after the public body has meant to review the complaint. If the Board requires more time to review the complaint and respond, the Board may request an extension of time for good cause by contacting the Division of Open Government in the AG's office. From the staff end, we did receive the complaint on December 23, which is what you have in your packet. And the summary of the complaint is the Oxford Planning Board, through town staff, processed the complainant's request to make the 1987 meeting minutes available under the Public Records Law and not Open Meeting Law. There's a distinct difference between Public Records Law and Open Meeting Law. In Open Meeting Law, when someone requests, they'll make a request to the Board, in this case was submitted to the Board through staff, I receive the request. And in Open Meeting Law, you must make the meeting minutes available. You must make them available. It's different than Public Records in the sense of what happened here was processed here by town clerk is information relative to the cost it would be to retrieve the documents and make copies. Our protocol is when we do receive requests for records, that we submit it down to the town clerk as they are the keeper of all the town records. And that is what has occurred here. The misstep was that, again, it was processed under Public Records Law and not Open Meeting Law. The complainant has made two requests, as you'll see in here, that the Board shall make the meeting minutes available pursuant to Open Meeting Law. And two, the Board must schedule an Open Meeting Law training as soon as practicable, and the contents of which must be distributed, promulgated to the assistance and support Would recommend to the Board that the Board vote in the affirmative to make all meeting minutes requested available pursuant to Open Meeting Law. And as this process, we are required to notify the complainant, and as I mentioned, the AG. And we should state in the letter, which we have prepared a draft for your consideration, that the complainant may contact Department of Land Management of the town clerk's office to review the documents they have requested. Two, we've been advised by the town manager's office that they are in the process of scheduling a training workshop for all town boards and staff. I will share in the interim that we did distribute in this green flyer a schedule of upcoming training sessions provided by the AG's office and made available to the Board, assistance and staff, which we will be attending as well. There is one coming up on January 12. And they are free, and there's multiple meetings throughout, the webinar trainings throughout, so. So, Mr. Chairman, that's all that I have, is that we prepared the draft for you. The Board should take an action tonight if the Board wishes to accept the two items for remedial action. Hopefully, this will address the complainant's requests.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to, under the remedial action, that the Planning Board votes in the affirmative to make all meeting minutes requested available pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, the Open Meeting Law.
I'll make that a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those voting in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carried unanimously. Entertain a motion to accept through this letter that I will sign to send to the aggrieved citizen. Dated January 10, 2022. Is this one here? Yeah. You want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that a motion.
Second.
Seconded by Roger. Further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Carried unanimously.
Thank you, and as I say, we'll proceed with the notification to the complainant, the AG, and so on.
So we don't need to make a motion on the training of the workshops or anything like that at this point?
No. I'll leave that to staff.
Yeah, okay.
And I'll keep you posted, too, of upcoming workshops and any new material that comes up.
Okay. Thanks, Tony. Okay, under old business. Cathy Way subdivision, request for minor modification for the cisterns. In your package, you received a couple emails from Conrad Allen, the developer of Cathy's Way, hereby requesting to be put on the Oxford Planning Board's agenda. We met with the Oxford Fire Chief and his deputy chief on 12-9 to discuss the 20,000-gallon cistern, the proposed 20,000-gallon fiberglass tank. We are requesting a modification to use two 10,000-gallon concrete tanks. Chief McDonald was fine with that and signed off on the changes. And we got an email from the fire chief stating the same. So entertain a motion that we affirm that minor change to the site plan as submitted.
Yeah, I'll make that a motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Roger. Further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Carried unanimously. Okay, 80 Lester Street, TC Controls, acceptance of as-built and recommendation for full occupancy permit. Tony, I'll turn that over to you since you have some new information today.
Sure, sure. So we received a copy of the, we received the as-built submittal last Thursday, and unfortunately, due to the weather on Friday, I wasn't able to go out until today, this afternoon. And what you see on the screen there and also on your packets as well, you should see two sets of as-bills, the original as-built and this as-built that was marked up. In essence, the deficiencies that I saw during the site visit today were pretty straightforward. The trees are not shown on the as-built plan. The original submittal believed it was four or five trees, and I think in total now it's about eight trees or so, which is a plus. But they weren't noted on the plan, so I just wanted to point that deficiency. And also, the handicap space, the striping is fine, but signage is required. So the applicant was very responsive. Within an hour after sending my email over to the gentleman, they were quick to modify the as-built plan as a markup in writing, and also protested that they would be installing the handicap sign. In the original letter that was sent sometime last spring, you may recall, there was a series of items that were still remaining. And to summarize, you know, they have put in the landscape, stabilized it, put the final coating, if you will, on the parking lot, striped the plan, and so on. Those were the two, just the two things I saw missing. Now, Chris is here from TC Controls, and he could talk a little bit more detail, but they did indicate, and the requirement is that the handicap sign be installed, and that's per building commissioner. So we discussed, and the building commissioner would accept if there was even a temporary post and base outside, because we certainly know that the ground is very well frozen now. And with respect to the plantings, the locations are approximate, as noted on there. Certainly, it's a markup though of the plan, and I defer to the Board. But if I may, at this time, Mr. Chairman, I believe Chris is here, and he could speak in greater detail to the site.
Just before we do that, could you clarify the trees, the plantings aren't there?
They are. They were just not shown on the original as-built.
Okay.
Yeah, those orange dots of it.
Those are the trees.
Put in by the applicant.
Okay.
So you have dogwoods, I don't know what, Green Giant, what's a Green Giant?
Oh, okay.
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 So there's a handicap sign now on a post?
Yes.
It'll eventually be made permanent, right?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
And other than that, the as-built is as-built?
Correct, correct.
Okay. And you're satisfied, based on your inspection, that what they so quickly and responsively modified is what's on the ground?
That's correct.
All right.
That's correct. Now, certainly whether the Board wished to accept this as-built as it is marked up, I defer to the Board on that. I understand...
Well, it's always nice to have it buttoned up by going back to the Summit Engineering and Survey.
Yes, and I understand there's been a change in the person that prepared the plan, but the applicant could speak to that.
Come on up and speak to that, because I really, I appreciate the fact you marked it up, but it'd be better if it was literally...
Yes, we certainly would want the engineer to mark it up, and with Andy Baum leaving Summit Engineering at Christmas time, he did prepare an as-built for conservation, which we worked very closely with, with a lot of the conservation issues. The landscaping was a big issue. As you remember, back in July, we had months and months of rain while we installed our seeding and landscaping the day the rains began. So we literally washed everything out, weren't able to get our landscaping done until early October. Worked very closely with Judy and the Conservation Commission, which have been great to work with, and they were very helpful and accommodating to us. So Andy was supposed to do the as-built with all that stuff and forgot to put those, there was some items on there that were, hadn't been completed, and of course, he left Summit. And for me, I've been trying to deal with some of the other people over there who are not as familiar with the project, and I've just been having a lot of hard time trying to get them to submit everything appropriately. They did submit the as-built as of last week, but they forgot some items. And we're really, really pressed to get our financing in place. My bank is on my case. I can go back and have them modify it, but I'm really looking to get occupancy tonight because I have, I have two days to get my, all my paperwork in, to get my financing in place before I miss another deadline, which I don't want to do.
Okay. No, I know you've done a lot of work to that site. I've seen it. I've seen you improving it over the summer. I've seen what you've done, okay? We just want to have a document that shows the as-built as-built. Okay?
Yeah.
This is, this is, this is good. I don't think you should be deprived of a final occupancy over the naming of the trees and the location of the trees. I'd like, I just like...
Handicap sign that.
Your assurance that if we give, if we vote to give you full occupancy, we'll get a plan that shows what you marked up within the plan.
Absolutely, yeah, and I'll stay on Summit's, but to get that done, it's just, it's been, with the turnover there, it's been a little lengthy to get things turned around.
I know, that's out of your control. I do understand that portion of it. Does the rest of the Board feel the same way? They, we've got a plan...
I want to, I want to help him out, because, you know, we all work for bankers. But, and I don't want to say a conditional approval, because I don't want the bank to hold up his financing.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I mean...
You've obviously, you've obviously been asking Summit to finish the job that you paid him for. Will they have the correct as-built by the next meeting?
I can, I can...
I know you can ask.
No, I'll, I'll...
Have you had the conversation with them about getting it in?
Well, I just found out today that they were missing, so I haven't had an opportunity to talk to them. But I'll, I'll talk to them and demand that we get it. I mean, we've, we paid them a lot of money to do all the engineering. We've got a tremendous amount of engineering dollars into this project, as you know.
Yeah, this is literally just putting tree, marking trees on a plan, basically. That's it. It's not, it's not like a big major overhaul, it shouldn't be a...
So we vote to accept the as-built, subject to the applicant filing a corrected?
Corrected as-built.
A corrected as-built.
Showing all the tree locations and, you know, whatever they do, a legend showing what the trees are, or putting the tree name right where it's located. I don't, I don't really care, whatever way the engineer decides to do that.
And can we have this on for review at the next meeting, just to make sure that we've got it? Or that we're going to have some idea of when we're going to get it?
We can put it on the agenda to make sure that they do have it.
Miscellaneous, miscellaneous.
We'll put it under miscellaneous and say, we want to see the new one, but the...
Yeah, he needs to talk.
I'm using the gentleman's, you know, word, so to speak. He doesn't have a pressing need, this is beyond his control. If there was nothing wrong with the company, I'd say, why didn't you present it now? Okay? But Tony did mention they have in trouble with the engineering firm at this moment. I want to help the guy out.
Yeah.
I do, too.
We split up a nice facility there.
I do, too.
So let's...
He's done everything we've asked, I mean...
All we're going to do is issue, we're going to, we're going to say, we accept the, the final as-built plan as marked up with the expectation we'll get a new plan by the next meeting, let's say the 24th of January.
Yeah.
Okay? And notify the zoning enforcement officer, the building inspector, whatever, however you want to say it, to go ahead and issue a final occupancy permit certificate.
Did the chairman express that in words that we could move for a vote?
Yes. Yes, except the as-built plan as marked up with the expectation that the Board will receive everybody's plan.
Is that okay?
So moved.
So moved, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Roger. Further discussion? There being none, all those voting in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Carried unanimously.
Thank you very much, everybody. We really appreciate it, and we're very happy to be in town here and...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Long relationship with you guys. Thanks very much.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone.
Good night.
You, too.
All right, Tony, try to, try to push, keep pushing on, make sure he does it for our next meeting. I don't, I don't think we can, we, we are taking his word, so we want to make sure he follows up with us.
This is more like a Summit Engineering problem now than...
Well, it is, but it's, he's the paying customer, so even if he's going to get the head of the company to go ahead and in there and tweak the electronic file to get it to cooperate.
Literally, that's all it is, yes.
Okay, Tony?
Under my report, just wanted to share...
Under my report, just wanted to share, nothing new, but the MVP workshop is coming up on January 20th and the 27th. Those are Thursdays, and those are held virtually between the hours of 6:00 and 9:00. And I want to thank those that have signed up. If you have some time on your calendar, please consider signing up. The MVP workshops, they are a mandatory requirement, so we can create this preparedness plan. And at the end of the day, we got the MVP grant, sounds great, the MVP planning grant, to create this final document that highlights all of the opportunities, the deficiencies, and so on, environmental hazards and whatnot. And by having that document, that then would open up opportunities for what? The opportunity to apply for various capital funds to make repairs, culverts, dams, and so on. So if you have the opportunity on Thursday, January 20th and Thursday, January 27th, please do consider to sign up. If not, there will also be, and I'll follow up with you, Mr. Chairman, but looking to schedule a short time to do a public presentation before the planning board as well, perhaps sometime in February, but I'll follow up with you directly on that. But I just wanted to share, so, and I'm happy to resend this, too. The, again, it's obvious.
Yeah, no, I signed up this past week. I went on there, hit the button, and signed up, and today I got the notification of the meeting code and the password.
And if there are any issues, too, we are opening up this room as well, so feel free either way. And then the other one was just also, just of general interest, this Thursday, January 13th, is the Imagine 2050. So it's the visioning session for, for the region. So CMRPC is doing a series of visioning sessions. And again, just of general interest, they're both great, but MVP is really
Yeah, yeah. The CMRPC, who's that representative? Is that Christine?
Craig.
Craig.
Who?
Craig is the board's representative, and I think Christine is the alternate for the selectmen.
And each CMRPC community representative will receive one additional hour of local planning assistance.
Yeah, as long as, as long as the community is representative, we've got an extra hour of their time dedicated to us.
All right.
And I would like somebody to go, but I prefer the ones that should be going to go. And neither one of them are here, so.
So I'll be there, but I don't think we get a point because I'm there.
Yeah. I'm kind of thinking, you know.
So Wednesday, you know, it's one Zoom and then Thursday. But that's the 13th. And then tomorrow, we have, just general information, a technical review meeting for an indoor recreational use proposed
Yeah.
within the Boulder Industrial Park.
Yeah, it's to take out your stress. You could beat up a lot of stuff in there.
That's good.
They put you in a room with a hammer and a bunch of stuff, so they
Good use.
get beat away. I don't know.
Good usage.
Just don't hurt yourself.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anyone have anything to add?
We don't have a normal, I'll make a motion we adjourn.
You really?
Yeah, I've never done that before. I've never had to do that.
Second.
Seconded by Roger. Further discussion? There being none? All those voting in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously.